Called to order. We have the presence of a quorum. This meeting has been duly called and notice of the meeting has been posted for the time and manner required by law. We're going to start this evening with a moment of silence for a couple reasons. First, today is 9/11, as you all know. It's been sixteen years since the tragedy on American soil, the terrorist attack. So, please keep those families who lost loved ones in your thoughts and prayers. Also, today is First Responders' Day, and I want to take a moment really to give a shout out to all of our first responders in Fort Bend ISD and in Fort Bend County and in all of our cities, especially really on the heels of Hurricane Harvey. They did an amazing job. We know firsthand here in Fort Bend ISD how much help they were, and so let's just Thank you. Okay, we're going to start our workshop this evening with our information item. We have only one this evening, and that's our 2016-17 Student Performance and State Accountability Update. Dr. Dupree.
Yes, ma'am. We've got a pretty -- we sent you some pre-reading because there's lots of information, and we know you have many questions. We'd like some dialogue about this. So, we've put together a brief overview presentation to kind of hit the highlights, but we're prepared to engage in a more deep discussion about our academic achievement and accountability performance in the 2016-17 school year. So, I'll turn it over to Deanna Saavedra, our Chief Academic Officer, to start us off.
All right. Well, good evening, Madam President, members of the Board, and Dr. Dupree. As Dr. Dupree indicated, this evening, we're going to be sharing with you an accountability update that highlights our student achievement and our ratings primarily associated with the state accountability system. In addition, we're going to share some information about the federal accountability system and target-specific information about priority and focus schools. Then, we'll transition into providing you some information about the supports that we've put in place to address any student achievement gaps. And we'll close the presentation this evening by sharing with you a forecast of the accountability updates for 2018 and beyond. I want to introduce several of the members of the staff who will be presenting this evening. Dr. Audra Udi, who's our Executive Director of Accountability and Assessment; Dr. Anthony Indalaccato, our School Improvement Officer; and Ms. Lisa Kostin, who's our Director of Assessment and Accountability. Dr. Rodriguez and I will also share some information, as I said, about the instructional supports that we have in place to address some of the data. So, I'm going to hand it off to Ms. Kostin so she can begin the presentation with the state accountability information.
Good evening, Madam President, Board Members, and Dr. Dupree. To begin this evening, I'll be reviewing the various state accountability components and ratings for 2017. House Bill 22 was signed into law on June 15, 2017, and effective immediately, the community and student engagement or case portion of the accountability was eliminated from the 2017 accountability process. Although the data had to be submitted to the state, it will not be used by the state for any accountability ratings this year. Accountability ratings this year are based on four performance indices. The first one being the Student Achievement Index, which provides a snapshot of performance across subjects. The second index is Student Progress, which measures year-to-year student progress by subject and student group. Index three is Closing Performance Gaps. It tracks advanced academic achievement of economically disadvantaged students and the lowest-performing racial or ethnic student groups. And finally, index four is Post-Secondary Readiness, which emphasizes the importance of earning a high school diploma that provides students with the foundation necessary for success in college, the workforce, job training programs, or the military. It's important to note for this that for elementary and middle schools, it is based solely on the STAR performance when a student meets standard in two or more subject areas. Fort Bend ISD received a Met Standard rating for the 2017 school -- sorry, accountability year as a district, and seventy-two campuses were rated, seventy-one of the seventy-two Met Standard, with one campus receiving Improvement Required Rating, which is Ridgemont Elementary. Also of note is the fact that McAuliffe Middle School was a former Improvement Required Campus for the 2016-17 school year and earned a Met Standard rating for 2017, and so this campus has exited the intervention process. Dr. Indalaccato will speak next to give a brief overview of the Improvement Required and Former Improvement Required processes and updates that we've received this year.
Good evening, Madam President, Board Members, and Dr. Dupree. So, as your School Improvement Officer, I would like to provide you an update on our two edge campuses that were both Improvement Required last school year. First off is Briargate Elementary. Again, they were Improvement Required for the 16-17 school year, and they earned a Met Standard rating for the 2017 accountability. So, as a former Improvement Required Campus, Briargate has exited the intervention process. We do realize, however, that the campus still has significant improvements that can and should be made, and so we'll continue to provide them ongoing support and monitoring as we have been. But officially, they have exited the intervention process, and so there will be no formal submissions to TEA as we've been used to in the past through the TACE process. Ridgemont Elementary, however, did not meet standard in 2017, and so it is now a Year Three Improvement Required Campus. So, as a result, Ridgemont will follow a submission timeline very similar to last year with TEA through their Targeted Improvement Plan. And that's very similar to the TACE plan last year. Once everyone's used to the acronym, now they change it. So, we go from TACE to now TIP, and that is, again, Targeted Improvement Plan. And the similar progress monitoring that we were used to last year is again in place for this school year. So, to further support Ridgemont's improvement process for the 2017-18 school year, and will continue to work on their Targeted Improvement Plan, their TIP, outlining their strategic plan and their focuses. So, we'll be bringing forth Ridgemont's TIP, again, their Targeted Improvement Plan, to you at the October Board Meeting for your consideration and approval. One thing I wanted to also add is both the principals are here tonight, and I just wanted to thank them once again for their efforts. So, we have Ms. Olson from Briargate and Ms. Houston from Ridgemont, and they've both worked very hard this summer, you know, hiring teachers, looking at their data, being strategic, and leading the staff to a very positive start of the school year, and they'll be doing that again tomorrow with the start of the school year. So, I just wanted to recognize them both.
Thank you, Dr. Indalaccato. At this point, I would like to talk to you a little bit about the distinctions piece of the state accountability system. Campuses that receive an accountability rating of Met Standard are eligible to earn distinction designations. Distinction designations are awarded for achievement in several areas and are based on performance relative to a group of campuses similar in makeup to the particular campus as far as type, size, grade span, and student demographics. Districts that receive a Met Standard rating are also eligible for a distinction designation in post-secondary readiness. In 2017, the distinction designations were awarded in the following areas: academic achievement in English Language Arts, mathematics, science, and social studies; top 25% in both student progress and closing performance gaps; and then finally, post-secondary readiness. Fort Bend ISD received a total of 142 distinction designations. This is up from 108 that were received last year in 2015-16. Out of the 72 campuses that received accountability ratings, 43 earned one or more distinction designation, and seven of our campuses actually earned all eligible distinction designations. Those campuses are Commonwealth Elementary, Cornerstone Elementary, Fort Settlement Middle School, Garcia Middle School, Austin High School, Clements High School, and Kempner High School. The next area for us to discuss is System Safeguards. System safeguards have been established to meet state accountability-related intervention requirements. Performance results are disaggregated to show the performance of each student group on each of the indicators, which are performance rates, participation rates, and graduation rates, in relation to both state and federal targets for achievement. The performance state target for 2017 was 60%, and the performance federal target was 91% for all students in each subpopulation, including special education and English language learners. Fort Bend ISD met 76, meaning that we missed eight system safeguards. We missed six in the special education student group, one in the American Indian student group, and one in the English language learner student group. The purpose of system safeguards is to ensure that in an aggregated district or campus report, substandard performance in one or more areas by one or more student groups is not disguised by higher performance in other areas or by other student groups. For example, there were only 31 students in the American Indian student group who took the writing star. That's in fourth and seventh grade and then English I and II EOCs. Because only 58% met the approach's grade level standard, as a district, we missed this particular system safeguard. All missed system safeguard indicators will be addressed through intervention activities in the district improvement plan and in campus improvement plans based on the system safeguards that are specific to those campuses. The next area that I'd like to show you is a little bit of a visual on the patterns and trends that we are seeing over years with our STAR data. At the district and campus level, the sole purpose for STAR data is to determine patterns and trends. The pattern in the three-year comparison of Fort Bend ISD to Region Four and to the state indicates that for every grade level and content area, Fort Bend has consistently outperformed both the region and the state. We've provided a few areas of comparison to illustrate visually what this trend looks like. Here, you can see third grade reading and math. This is the first grade level tested in the state accountability system. Fort Bend ISD is depicted in green, the region is blue, and the state is yellow. In addition, in areas where the district trend reflects a consistent decrease in student performance over three years, the region and state trend reflects the same pattern. Here, you can see eighth grade reading and math. This is the middle school exit grade level and one of the student success initiative grades. Again, Fort Bend ISD is depicted in green, the region is blue, and the state is yellow. And here, you can see ninth grade English I and Algebra I EOC trends. This is the entry grade level into high school. Fort Bend ISD is again green, the region blue, and the state yellow. When the blue line is absent, it's because the region and state performed at the same rate. Note that the pattern in the data indicates that Fort Bend has consistently outperformed both the region and the state. Next, federal accountability for 2016-17. By federal statute, each state must identify the lowest-performing Title I schools, impose required interventions, and provide federal school improvement grant funding to support campus improvement efforts. The methodology for identification has changed. The most recent list was effective from 2013 to 2017, so the same schools were on that list for those years. A transitional method was used for 2017 and based on 2016 data. A new methodology will be implemented next year. Priority schools are defined as the lowest 5% of Title I campuses across the state based on performance in reading and math as well as graduation rates below 60%. Campuses that did not meet state accountability for 2015-16, which were Improvement Required Rated Schools, were included first. The two priority schools identified in Fort Bend ISD are Briargate Elementary and Ridgemont Elementary based on their 2016 IR status. Focus schools are defined as 10% of Title I campuses across the state that are the next lowest achieving and include any remaining campuses that qualify under the priority school definition, as well as campuses that meet state accountability but missed the greatest percentage of federal system safeguards when ranked against one another. Identified focus schools in Fort Bend ISD are EA Jones Elementary, Mission Bend Elementary, Missouri City Middle School, and Willeridge High School. And now, I would like to turn it over to Ms. Saavedra to update us on instructional supports.
All right. So, as Lisa indicated, she shared several pieces of data with you, and as a district, we're really -- have built a lot of foundations to address the student achievement gaps that we see in our data, noting that as we present some of the curriculum development pieces, the staffing allocations, and the instructional supports, that we're not simply basing our planning on state accountability data, but we're looking at a number of different data sets to develop our plans. Primarily, as we've been working over the course of the school year and as we will continue to work over the course of this school year, we are developing a curriculum that really addresses the needs of all of our students. So, as we look at our curriculum unit maps, we've got interventions and supports to address our special education students, our English language learners, our high-achieving students, and all of the students in between. And so, our curriculum is robust with tools for teachers to be able to really address those needs. In addition to that, we've got, as you noted in our system safeguards, there's a number of different campuses who miss system safeguards associated with writing. So, every unit map includes an integrated section where we've got literacy integration for reading and writing across all content areas. We'll be focused on a lot of professional learning with our teachers as we look to implement our curriculum so that not necessarily just in English and in Language Arts, but in Science, Social Studies, and Math, there are opportunities for students to read and to create written responses. In addition, as I said, staffing allocations. We think about staffing allocations. We went through great efforts with Title I to look at the staffing allocations and really streamline staffing so that we could address particular needs on all of our campuses. With that staffing allocation, we included instructional coaches in both math and literacy. And for all campuses at the elementary level, we've got a full unit of math specialists that can provide instructional coaching and intervention supports for students in math at the elementary level. All campuses were equipped with teacher leaders, professional learning leads, and our technology integration champions. Those teachers are stipended positions and will work, again, to build capacity on the campuses in those two areas, which will address several of our student needs. We also allocated additional staff for special education associated with CoTeach and our evaluation staff so that we could target identifying the student needs and intervening early with special education should they be identified. And again, with CoTeach, increase our teacher units so that we could address the CoTeach model. There are also additional tools in the curriculum that will serve to help our special education students, specifically our Universal Screener, which is diagnostic in nature, that will help all of our students, but in particular, will provide information to our special education teachers along with our learning progressions in the curriculum to develop more targeted IEPs and to help us progress monitor how students are achieving and progressing with achieving those IEP goals. Instructional supports include our Campus Support Team walkthroughs. We've done many walkthroughs in the past in the Teaching and Learning Department, but we're taking a different approach this year. We're including all -- we're creating 11 different campus support teams with members of staff from all of the different instructional divisions. They'll be visiting with campuses. So, every campus will be visited by their team once a month, and it's really to collaborate with the principal and provide targeted support rather than principals having to reach out and request support. We're going to be proactive with the support that principals are asking for and principals need. As I said before, we've got a number of teacher leaders in place, and so we'll continue with professional learning so that we can equip those teacher leaders and build capacity for the implementation of the curriculum. And as you will hear next week in our Assessment Framework Update, there's a number of different shifts that we're looking at in terms of learning assessments so that, again, we can progress monitor where our students are along the learning continuum, and we can intervene in real time and begin those interventions early on. I don't know if Dr. Rodriguez wanted to include any additional information on things that are being done at the school level to prioritize campuses and the needed support.
Yeah. One of the things that we did different for this year is just the overall structure for the Department of School Leadership is different. In the years past, assistant superintendents, they would supervise elementary, middle, and high schools. This year, the structure is different. So, we are specializing, and we have a set group of assistant superintendents that will be overseeing the elementary level, and we have a set that's going to be overseeing the secondary level. And of course, we have Dr. Indalaccato, who's going to be specializing as the School Improvement Officer. So, that structure in itself lends itself to allow us to have better conversations. Our focus is going to be more on the critical success factors. There are seven that nationally have been recognized to help schools, and you will find that it's increasing learning time, it's focused on staffing, parental involvement, things of that nature. So, with our structure, when we meet with principals, we're going to have opportunities to really have vertical conversations and really dive deep into what does it really mean to impact learning time? What does that look like at the different campuses? What does it look like when you have a strong parental involvement plan? What does that look like? So, the vertical structure is going to allow for that. Going back to what Mrs. Saavedra stated earlier, the walkthroughs that we're going to be conducting as a district, that's going to assist us as a DSL to really work more with our leadership, campus leadership. So, in the past, we have been heavily involved with the walkthroughs as a Department of School Leadership. So, now, we're still going to be involved, but it's going to free up some of the time so we can actually work with our leaders of the campus, really coach principals, which we feel can have a dramatic impact on our schools. So, that's a little of what we're going to be doing differently as a Department of School Leadership to have a strong impact on some of our schools as well.
I'll close this particular section by saying that Dr. Rodriguez and I also are collaborating very closely in terms of the learning needs of principals at the leadership level as well. So, we've got Principal Town Hall meetings where there'll be a number of different instructional topics associated with developing leadership, as well as a focus on learning meeting where we're working directly with principals on how to dive into the curriculum, how to monitor curriculum implementation, and really what are some of the look-for's in terms of what you should be seeing on your campus in the classroom. So, with that, I'll hand it over to Dr. Udi so she can close us out and give us a forecast of the 2018 accountability update.
Turn on my mic first. I would like to overview for you what we can anticipate happening from here on out. This is much like playing a game of baseball while you're waiting on the rules to come down from TEA in that we will be working all year long to ensure good, solid instruction, but we won't know the official accountability rules until we're into testing season. That's just how the process works currently. There are advisory committees at the state level that inform the commissioner and that help him be able to make final decisions for accountability. Usually, those roll around about February, maybe early March. So, we would like to describe for you what we do know is coming from House Bill 22. That was recently approved by the Legislature to impact accountability immediately, and it gives a great deal of discretion to the commissioner to work out the details of the new accountability system, both what measures will be in place and what interventions will be required based on the accountability. Basically, we can summarize it in six different areas, as shown on the middle of the screen here. Instead of having four indices, we will have three domains. And you will notice the three domains on the far right of the screen sound very familiar. They are much like index one, two, and three. What you see missing from that is index four, post-secondary readiness. Now, that does not mean post-secondary readiness is going away. What we anticipate will be happening with those three domains is that post-secondary readiness will be tucked into them instead of being a separate domain. So, the three domains will be student achievement, school progress, and closing the gaps between our student performance populations. What we do know also, based on the new legislation, is that our district will be rated on the A to F system in each of these three domains, and we will receive an overall A to F rating for the school district. What was pushed back some, and we anticipate will come back in the future, is that campuses would receive A to F ratings. There's a lot of detail to be worked out there, and that's up to the commissioner to work out how that system will look in the future for campuses. What campuses will continue to receive at this time is either a Met Standard or an Improvement Required Rating. And then, in addition to that, there is a provision within HB 22 to allow us to develop a local accountability plan that will be optional, and at least 50% of the Met Standard or Improvement Required type of rating or A to F must still be a part of the campus ratings when that comes about. And we do not yet know details from TEA about how a local accountability plan will be submitted and what kind of details it will be required of us. However, we anticipate some information will be forthcoming from the commissioner in that regard as well. I've already mentioned the district letter grades is one of the major components of change. In addition to that, the state eliminated the case accountability ratings. Essentially, what we have been doing is rating ourselves in nine content areas such as fine arts, gifted and talented, parent involvement, our technology integration, things of that nature, over the last several years, and then submitting those at the end of the year in our PIM submission to TEA. And therefore, it gets posted on the TEA website, and we have to post it on our local district website and share that information out. Now, the state has eliminated that as a part of the official accountability system. However, there's some critical work that's been done there over the past year with the work groups that have met and discussed priorities for the district. So, what we anticipate will happen is that we'll go back to those work groups and have some further discussion about how these priorities that have been set within the committees fit with profile of a graduate, the board's goals and priorities, and decide how to weave those into the current pieces that we have in terms of the district strategic plan, the district improvement plan, and our campus improvement plans. So, there's some further work to be discussed and accomplished there in regards to the use of the case information. I will tell you, we also have an alternative accountability system called PBMAS, where our special programs are rated on risk levels, and a lot of what we do in case pertains to those PBMAS areas as well. So, it's important that we continue to talk about that work and figure out how to best use it. And then, finally, public education grant or PEG campuses. There are some changes coming down the pipe in regards to PEG campuses as well. We anticipate, starting with the year 2019-2020, that there will be changes to how the state determines who is a PEG campus. In the past, if any time in the past three years a campus received a poor rating or had performance groups below 50%, that caused them to be on the PEG list. The new HB 22 has stricken that language from how PEG campuses are determined, so the state is going to need to develop new language to decide who are these PEG campuses. And we anticipate that that's going to be, in part, contingent on how they're doing in the overall new accountability system as well. At this time, we would like to entertain any questions that you may have about the accountability for 2017 or upcoming accountability, and so we're open to your questions at this time.
Thank you, and thanks to the entire team for all of your hard work on this and presenting that way. I think it was good for us to hear from each of you and from your respective departments. So, thanks for that. I'm going to see if any of the board members have questions or comments. We'll start with Mr. Rice.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for the very nice presentation. I do have a few questions. Ridgemont is in its third year of IR. At what point will the Commission of Education decide to make changes in Fort Bend ISD if Ridgemont is not moved out of IR? Ridgemont is not moved out of IR?
Under the, and I'll let you pick up here, but under the current accountability system, if the campus were to receive another year of IR ratings, that type of system would kick in?
After four years in, so we have one more year to get it out of IR. We had a deficit curriculum audit performed in 2014. We had some holes in our curriculum. Has all of our curriculum, is there anyone who can state that we have corrected all of those deficits?
Yes, sir. We've looked very closely at that audit, and I know that we're going to be scheduling an opportunity for you all as the board to navigate through the curriculum documents. But yes, we have addressed the gaps in our curriculum, and I know that you'll be pleased to see all of the different supports that we've put in there, as I said. Not necessarily just in terms of the curriculum standards and the scope and sequence, but we've included items such as learning progressions so that our teachers can really look at when a child is progressing in their learning associated with a particular standard, here are the things that they should be seeing in terms of their learning pieces. We've got success criteria in there that allows teachers to communicate to students, this is what success looks like, and this is what I'm looking for in terms of the product that you're providing me. And so many of these supports and pieces really help us to address all learners. So yes, I'm confident that all of the pieces in the audit have been addressed in our curriculum. And you'll hear more about our assessment framework that also ties into that piece as well.
So the deficits have been addressed, and you're going to present that to the board at some point later this fall?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then I understand that you've made some improvements in our, what do you call it? In how we address and how we keep track of this information and how our schools are doing? I've forgotten exactly what you said, but it's not just based solely on the STAR accountability. You've added some enhancements, and I forgot what you called that.
Well, we've got a universal screener that you all approved, that the board approved this summer, and so we'll be implementing that. And that is a data set that provides us diagnostic information, and so we administer that in the areas of reading and math at the beginning of the year, at the middle of the year, and at the end of the year. And it really provides us some targeted information about how we can begin to intervene with kids, especially in the area of reading and early literacy, early on. So we don't have to wait for STAR data, and STAR data is not the only data set that we have to look at. Because as Ms. Costin indicated in our work with John Tanner, STAR data is really only for the purpose of looking at trends and patterns in data, but they don't give us the specific information of what are the gaps in student learning that need to be addressed. And so with the tools in the curriculum, coupled with the universal screener, we've got tools that really allow teachers, prime them for being able to address the needs and differentiate in their classroom.
Well, that is good news. And so here's my follow-up question. When Mr. Robert Sandborn with Children at Risk publishes his list in the Houston Chronicle, will we be prepared to publish our list of how our schools are going within a week of that time?
Well, I would say that we, right now, are prioritizing our schools, and we're looking at, obviously, we have to look at state accountability data, but we're also looking at other pieces. We're looking at our climate surveys, what are our teachers saying about their campuses? We're looking at retention rates on campuses in terms of our staff, because we know that retention of staff is important in the success of a campus. We're looking at retention of leadership, and also, when we have campuses with new leadership, we know that those campuses need additional supports. So there's a number of different ways that we're prioritizing the needs of our campuses that are not solely tied to state accountability ratings. So I would say yes.
Okay, well, that's good, because of course, he is relying solely on the STAR test, and he gives every school in Region Four and perhaps the entire state of Texas a grade without once having set foot on the campus. So any of the other enhancements that we take into account when we're measuring student achievement and campus climate and that sort of thing, I would very much like to refute his comments in the newspaper and writing.
Mr. Rice, would you mind if I interject on that, just because what Deanna has addressed and specifically to your question is our goal is to be able to do that sooner than later. The Visioning and Planning Committee of the Board, as you know, is working toward a strong strategic plan, and part of that we're working on will also be the local accountability plan. And I think that's what you're asking about, is when we can have that grade or that rating that we've located, that we've generated locally based on what we value in this community that will come out in tandem with that, and that is our goal.
Okay, thank you. I just have a few more questions. Ms. Costin, you mentioned on page seven of your PowerPoint that this 2017 system has safeguards in it, and I want to make sure I understand what I heard you say. You were commenting that some of these learner groups, trying to, let me think how I want to say this, the system is designed so that high performance by some students will not mask low performance of others. And so it's going to reflect an accurate status that will allow, will allow you to intervene appropriately and get those kids trained up. Is that essentially it?
Yes. Basically, the purpose of the system safeguards is to allow us to make sure that we are not leaving any particular student group behind. And at the district level, which is what I included here in this report, I gave the example of the American Indian Student Group. There just so happen to only be 31 students. There have to be at least 25 in order for it to count, and that's to count in accountability. But the purpose behind system safeguards is the idea that all students count, and we shouldn't have a system that is able to mask and allow us to leave any student group behind.
Okay. Have you received, Dr. Saibedra, have you received the PowerPoint from Mike Morath that I got in July? He gave that to us at a board meeting. Okay. I think he told us at that time that he was trying to leave the student achievement benchmarks unchanged for five years. So that would be probably a first for the TEA, and so we really need to support Commissioner Morath and keep him around for at least five years to make sure that no one changes it. And then lastly, I heard you say that under the new accountability, the campus letter grades of A through F are going to be pushed back, and we're just going to have MET standard or not. Is that right?
For the 2017-2018 year, we anticipate campuses being rated MET standard or improvement required, which is similar to what we've had before, with some expectation that there will be further development toward the A to F system through the advisory committees that the commissioner convenes and solicits feedback from. We'll see how that develops.
So it's pushed, it's held off a year, perhaps?
Right.
Maybe longer, maybe not.
Right.
Okay. But the district is still going to get a letter grade this year.
Yes, sir.
And of course, our community has very high expectations of Fort Bend ISD as a whole, which it has viewed as an exemplary school district ever since I've lived in this community going back to 1981. So we have our work cut out for us. And lastly, I would simply like to ask our principals of Briargate and Ridgemont if they feel that we have given them everything that they need to be successful. Of course, the students have to do their homework, but apart from that, have you received everything that you've asked for, that you feel that you need for your students to be successful?
If you guys, yeah, if you guys will come up to the microphone, please. Thank you. You didn't know, you didn't know you were going to be in the spotlight this evening?
No. I just want to say that the district's been very supportive. Anything we've asked for, I feel like multiple people have reached out to us, offering support. Board members, you guys have made many visits to us as well, so I feel very supported, and I feel like I can ask for anything I need. So I just think for Briargate, it's going to take some time. We're working with students, and so it just takes time to close those gaps even more. Both campuses have seen significant gains, and it just takes some time to continue to build on that success.
Okay, thank you. Last question.
One more, Jim.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, go ahead.
No, we want to hear from both.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to just answer your question, Mr. Rice. Yes, the district has been very supportive. It's very disheartening to know that Ridgemont is going into another year of improvement required. However, we did make significant gains in several areas, and I'm just going to just stand here and say, we're not giving up. We are very fortunate that we have a very active president, as well as our superintendent, you know, just rallied for us to not do the TAEZ plan, but have relay, which is just learning that we are now involved in. So we will definitely be a data-driven instruction school, which we will monitor data very, very closely, and we do have a plan in place. And having Dr. Indalicato being just the improvement required officer, working so closely with us, not being distracted by all the other campuses' needs, we are just really set up for success this year. And I'm very proud to be the principal, a second year at Ridgemont, and I feel very confident that next year, we will not be in this situation. So thank you for your support.
I would also add that, you know, as Ms. Houston mentioned, Ridgemont really did see significant gains in every single index. And really, index three was somewhat problematic, and they missed it by two points.
What's index three? Tell us what index three was.
Index three is the closing of achievement gaps, and so they missed it by two points. And I know that the Assessment and Accountability Department has been digging through the data to determine whether we're, you know, we need to apply for, you know, an audit and go back and see if there's any thing that can be resolved at the state level. At this point, we don't, we're not finding anything that would warrant an appeal. However, as I said, I wanted to echo, in both campuses, we saw significant gains, but specifically in Ridgemont, they're on the cusp, and with continued support, I'm confident that we can get them over the hump.
Okay, thank you. Last question. On page eight of your PowerPoint, third grade, reading and math, particularly when it comes to reading, this graph is telling me that statewide, across the state of Texas, our students are regressing in their abilities and not progressing. Am I reading that correctly?
So, yes, by looking at this graph, you can see that the trend is down on all three areas, the district, the state, and the region. But one thing that I think it's important to understand is that the state accountability system is, has had a changing and moving target over the years. So although this trends down, that doesn't necessarily translate into the actual skills in literacy trending down. It just simply means that the scores based on changing standards are trending down.
Okay, well, that's important for us to know as trustees, so we can point that out when people complain. And also, to Mr. Robert Sandborn with Children at Risk, I would like to point that out to him. And then, it's just one more reason why we need to keep Commissioner Morath for five years, so it doesn't change every year. All right, thank you very much. Thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Good questions. Ms. Heliger.
Thank you all for the presentation. I definitely wanted to just add just a couple of comments. I think it is great to see that overall, that we're trending above the rest, but, you know, the other side of it is that we've got some opportunities, right? And I think, you know, with the schools that we've listed on page 11, I think the public would have really liked to see some of the things that you just talked about, Dr. Sabeda, which is where we are making those gains. And so right now, it just, which we know better, this just looks like, you know, a bunch of red roses right here, which we're doing great from a district-wise, but we've got opportunities. And so how do we show the public, you know, where we've actually made some gains, especially in these schools that you've listed on slide 11? As a board member, I get questions all the time around these schools specifically, because they're either lower, you know, what's the guy's name that gives them those letters?
Same one.
Yeah, that guy. You know, he gives them the letters, or they can just go on the state website and see, you know, the STAR testing scores and those kinds of things. And so people are confused on, you know, is my kid going to the right school? And I mean, and as most of us who are parents, you know, we want to make sure that our kid is in the right place. And so when we look at these schools, I know we've made progress, and I think it would just help for us to show the public the progress that we made, knowing that we have still opportunities to grow. It just kind of, in my mind, even maybe even break it down by demographics as well, because I know we've made some significant gains there as well. So that would just be my, just two cents, but I think we've done a good job from a district-wide, but there's opportunities, and I think just tell the whole picture, you need to show it. Because we went from showing all the, where we're above, 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 but then we've got 11 schools, is it 11? I can't count.
Six.
Six schools, six schools, and we're not really showing the percentages and where their, where the opportunity is there, okay? Thank you, though.
I think that's a good point, Ms. Heliger, because, I mean, you just made a critical statement about Ridgemont, that they were only two points from getting out of IR. I think it's important for us to know that, but it's important for our community to know that, because we know behind the scenes, those of us who have visited, how much work has been done there, and really, really, what a big deal it is that Briargate came out and that Ridgemont was so close to coming out. So I would agree with that. I think letting us know those details and letting the public know those details is really important, because we do get a lot of those questions. So I just would echo my support for that. Mrs. James?
Yeah, I would agree. Addie, thank you for making those comments. And I would add to that, we get similar comments also about the PEG campuses, so not just these campuses that are here, but also the PEG campuses. And I don't really know, you know, what types of gains were made in those either. So I think it would be helpful for us to even, I know you explained about how the standards for that is changing, and all of these things are moving targets, and we, I think we recognize that in the accountability system, although you're right, Mr. Rice, let's keep Mr. Morath in place, and maybe the target won't move as much. But parents want to do the right thing for their child, and they want to know that we care and that we're making interventions and that we're being intentional about our efforts in our school leadership and in our instruction and our teaching and learning, and so that if we can have data and knowledge that helps us to talk to these parents about what's going on. So just with regard, let me just clarify something. What I think I heard you say with regard to the PEG campuses is that we are using our updated curriculum, which includes a little more of a literacy emphasis. We used, back in the day, when I was teaching, it was called writing across the curriculum. It's up, you used some other words, but it was that same type of thing, basically literacy throughout the curriculum, so that your children are reading and writing intentionally in every subject area. And then I think I also heard there was a new monitoring protocol that was going into place, and that would place and that would be done with some maybe extra intentionality at these, at these campuses, the priority campuses, the focus schools, as well as the PEG campuses. Is that, is that accurate? Okay. You're nodding, so I'm going to say then, I think that is a yes. Okay. And then the other, I guess, real gap that I saw, and I, I think you talked about it, but I didn't quite hear maybe what the intervention was or what the intention was. When I looked at the system safeguards, well, let me ask you one specific question first. In the system safeguard slide, which is slide seven, there's talk about the American Indian Student Group. Did I understand that that was a missed safeguard across a range of ages? Or was it specific, on a specific grade or a specific age?
It's across the entire district. So yes, it's fourth grade, seventh grade, and then English one and English two students. So, yes.
Okay. So it's kind of an aggregate and it's saying that our American Indian Student Group, those children, even though they can't make a full group to be-
On a campus.
On a campus, if you pull those out from across those age groups, they're a little bit behind the rest. Okay. So, so that's good that we found that out and so we can target that. And then this, the, it still concerns me that we have six missed safeguards in the special education area. And maybe you could just say one more time what it was that we're particularly doing about that. Because I recall this coming up in the curriculum audit, it can't come up in the P B, M A S, whatever those are called, knocks on the head. And I just, if you could review that one more time, please.
Yes, I would say that specifically, and I know that I talk this mantra quite a bit, but it's because I know that it's going to make a difference. And that is with the development of our curriculum. We have included a number of different supports and I think that the, one of the advantages of working through this curriculum development has been that we've collaborated closely with the special education department, which hasn't been done quite that way in the past. And so our special education department has been involved in creating those supports in the curriculum, so that our teachers have tools and understand what they need to do to differentiate. That's going to help our co-teach partners, as well as any teacher who's working with special education students in their classroom. And that's not just for special education, but that's true for our English language learner groups, our G T students, our students who are, you know, high achieving in the classroom. So not necessarily just tier one instruction, but supports in the form of tier two and tier three, and then specific references for our student groups. That is going to make a big difference, because our teachers are not going to have to go and research, how do I differentiate in my classroom? What do I do? The tools are right there for them. Then when we articulate what learning progression looks like for a given standard, it really articulates for a teacher, this is what I should be looking for. Therefore, this is the kind of feedback I can give a learner to help them go from one place on the learning continuum to the next place on the learning continuum. That's going to be specifically important for our special education students, but it's going to benefit all of our students. And then I did mention the universal screener, along with the learning progressions, because that will help us develop targeted I E P goals and help us progress, monitor those goals more closely. So.
Okay. And then there is, there a connection between those interventions of tier one and tier two and the monitoring protocol that we're putting in place? Is that something that-
Absolutely.
Okay. So we're going to be watching to make sure that those interventions are taking place when we're doing all that monitoring process.
Right.
Okay. Now I just want to pick up on one other thing. I think Mr. Rice mentioned it and we've talked about it before, and that's the local accountability plan. And, you know, yes, I mean, we need to align our accountability with our board goals, with our profile of a grad, with that's, with our vision. And, and we need to think about aligning our, our board evaluation with those things, so that we're, you know, we're evaluating ourselves on what we're, what the rest of the world is evaluating us on, to a certain degree. So that's just, I'm throwing that out there as a thing to think about. And then the last thing I want to say is thank you, Mrs. Olson and Mrs. Houston, for being here tonight. And thank you for your incredibly hard work at two of our neediest campuses with some of our neediest kids. I just want to tell you that we appreciate that and we appreciate your hard work and we recognize it. And, and I know, Mrs. Houston, it's pretty, probably was kind of discouraging and difficult for you to not quite, quite make that standard this time, but we have confidence in you. And we are looking forward to a great year and supporting you how we can. So as Mr. Rice said, let us know when, when there are things that you need and certainly the staff to know, so that we can support you. And all of that being said, we feel a great sense of urgency around supporting Ridgemont Elementary. This is not a joke. This is, we're gone and somebody else comes in to take over that school. That's not, that's not something that we, you know, that's, that's real. That's what H I S D is facing right now in several of their campuses. Okay? We're right there. And, and we can't say, well, it's just them over there down the street, because it's us too. So, so we care and we, we feel a great deal of urgency around this. Okay? And we want to know what's going on. We were looking, we'll look forward to hearing what the plan is. We'll look forward to hearing how it's going as we go through the year, because it's very serious to us. We should all have a sense of urgency around this situation. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. James. And I'd like to echo that as well, because something you said, Ms. Houston, was that you're not going to give up and you're going to keep fighting. And we aren't either. This board is behind you 100%. We're behind both of you 100%. We took a big leap and a proving edge and we believe in it. And we know that there are tweaks that need to be made, but we believe in the program, we believe in you, we believe in your staff. And you are dealing with human beings and not widgets. And so we recognize that it takes time to, to fill those gaps. It takes time. But we are under the burden of the state accountability system and so we are here to support you in any way that we can, both of you. So thank you both very much, because you took on a really big project last year and you stepped out and you showed tremendous leadership. And so we appreciate you for that. I'd like to say as well, when, I had the same concerns, of course, about the special education population. But as the parent of a daughter who has not in several years and likely will never pass the STAR test, I do want to point out that we are giving children with individual education plans standardized tests. And it's stupid. It's dumb. It's ridiculous. It's outrageous. It's not best practice. It is educationally ridiculous. And so, you know, as a mom, every year, I'm infuriated by it, because my daughter walks across the stage and gets an academic achievement award, because she has teachers who are amazing and who support her and she works her rear end off and she makes really good grades. And then the state gives her a test at the end of the year where she has to bubble in some responses that have absolutely nothing to do with the I E P that she's worked on all year. So it's frustrating for me. And so, you know, I just wanted to say that, because while we absolutely have to get, have to improve in those system safeguards that we miss, it's frustrating for me to know that you can do all that stuff in curriculum and that's great and it is going to help her in the classroom and it's one of the things I advocated for since I've been on the board. And we are doing amazing things and co-teach is phenomenal and it's working well. And I hear from parents all the time who are so grateful for it. We can do all of that stuff and Abby's still not going to pass that stupid test at the end of the year. So it's frustrating for me, because there are students like that, that no matter what we do, they're going to struggle to pass that test and probably never will. So I say all that to go back to the local accountability, you know, that's why we believe so strongly in it. And it's, it's, you know, to refute Robert Sanborn and it's to get our story out there about our kids. And it's, it's important, because our kids and our families need to know how their children are succeeding and that a standardized test is not the measure. So that is really, really important and I know you guys are working on it. But until we do that, we will not be able to tell our story. So it's a critical, critical next step to the curriculum development. And so I just wanted to say that. I sent you guys several questions and I know that you're gonna, you answered some of them tonight, so thank you for that. And I know that you're going to submit some written responses, so that the entire board has the benefit. So the only other thing I'm going to ask is related to writing. And that's because our PEG list, and I think I asked the same question last year, the majority of the issues we have are, relate to writing. And I know that that's the hardest thing to teach and especially as a mother of a child with an intellectual disability, good lord, don't send us stuff home to write, because it requires so much, so many things, all grouped into one. So my question for you is, you know, we, we rolled out our literacy plan and are we going to do something around writing or is it going to tie into that literacy plan? Or what are, what are we doing to help our kids in that area?
I would say that it ties into the literacy plan. And I know I keep going back to the curriculum development, but that is really a critical piece to all of this. And when we think about the curriculum, when we look at writing that's tested in fourth grade, again in seventh grade, and then English one and two E O Cs, well, we can't start in fourth grade. And so when we look at our curriculum, we've articulated, by the end of kindergarten, what writing proficiency should student be, students be able to produce? Or where should they be proficient in the area of writing as a developer, developing writer? Articulating that in first grade and second grade and all the way up the continuum. Again, including integration pieces in every single unit map, that, I mean, kids have to write to develop as writers and they can't only write in the English language arena, because a lot of the writing that they'll do as adults and as learners is going to be in the other content areas. So professional development with our teachers, but having students writing in other content areas, aside from English language arts, is going to be important. We're doing that through our development of our assessment plan. So when we think about learning assessments, as you said, we don't want to just administer learning assessments that require students to bubble in or, you know, an objective assessment. We need assessments that also provide students opportunities to, to respond with a constructed response. And then working with our teachers to calibrate and collaborating with them on, how do I score this? And how do we calibrate that score, so that we are seeing the writing pieces that we, you know, as a developing writer, that we need to see in our students? So all of those pieces together will help us address writing, because you, we won't be able to address writing in isolation. Now, specifically in fourth grade, there's some short-term pieces that we need to do. And I think that that really is beefing up our balanced literacy model, having kids read and write, especially in fourth grade. But it really is beginning in kindergarten and working through, so that our, as our cohorts move through and get to fourth grade, they're more prepared for that assessment piece and along the continuum.
Well, and I appreciate that. And I'm looking very forward, I know the whole board is looking forward to going through Schoology and the curriculum that you guys have put together. And it would probably be helpful for us to see some of, especially those writing pieces, since that keeps cropping up for us. And I know it's not, it's, it's not just us. A lot of our students in Texas and really across the nation struggle with writing. And so I know all of us, you know, the whole point of the profile of the graduate is that we want our kids to be academically ready, but we want them to be ready to go out into the world and do whatever job it is that they, you know, that they desire to do or that, or that really, that they come across that's not something they specifically thought of while they were here. Right? It's not planned and it's, and it's, it's beyond what they can imagine, which is why we say that. So I think that that is very important, that we are building all of that into our curriculum and not just targeting what the STAR test says we need to target. So I appreciate that that's built in. Do you have something else?
I just wanted to add to that, because right now, our writing that they're getting is from social media.
Yes.
You know, so many-
It's 140 characters.
140 characters, you know, that, that's the extent of what they're doing. And so, you know, I've got a 14-year-old and when I text him back in full sentences, he thinks I'm a nerd, you know? He doesn't get it, right? Because that's the reality of it. So I just wanted to add, add that to that, but the profile of the graduate, you know, does not start ninth grade, even though we're rolling it out this year, kind of new and really focusing on our ninth graders and whatnot, but it really starts at the kindergarten level. And, you know, it's unfortunate that we don't have a testing or an assessment, kind of like we do the, is it D R, the D R testing?
For reading.
For reading. You know, we need something like that when it comes to the writing as well. We truly want to focus on developing our children in the writing, because it is such a gap. And I know I've had, my, my high schooler could not, he tried so hard to pass that E O C test and it was difficult for him because of the writing piece of it. And so we, when we know that, you know, it's kind of like we're shooting ourselves in the foot, knowing the things that we know and we're not doing anything about it. So I do appreciate the plan that you are developing to improve in that area.
Thank you, Ms. Heliger. Okay. Thank you to the entire team. We appreciate you. Thanks for being here this evening. We are now going to convene in closed session under the Texas Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551 and the sections listed in the agenda, and for the purpose of a private consultation with the board's attorney on any or all subject or matters authorized by law. We are now convening in closed session.